I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good morning, everybody. And we can go along the agenda.
Sure.
Item number three is approval of the agenda.
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Approval of minutes.
Make a motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Approval of claims for payment.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, or any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Uh, next we have application liquor license for Radcliffe friendly fairways.
Make the fairways friendlier. I will approve the application for the liquor license for Radcliffe friendly fairways. I will second that one.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Then we have the application for liquor license for Eagle City Winery.
You have a saying for that one, too? I do, but I'll leave it up. I will approve the application for liquor license for Eagle City Winery. I will second that.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Sheriff's Corrigger Report.
Make a motion to accept that.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. An application for fireworks permit, Summit Farms. And this one is for August 2nd, 2014. I see on number seven they have a no.
Says off-duty professionals present. On that one.
And that should cover.
That'd be a yes, son.
Yeah, you would think that should be a yes.
Yeah.
Do you want to alter that with the yes that they must have it?
Make a motion to accept that.
I will second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? The only discussion I can add to that would be as long as we're not in a burn ban.
Yeah, no. We'll have a list of that and we can contact if that's... Think we're going for a drop, yeah?
Yeah, hopefully we don't have to worry about that, but you never know.
They're gonna roll hurt.
Yeah.
Uh, any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Oh, appropriations resolution. You want to talk about this, Jessica?
What that is, is I'm just taking budgeted dollars in the same service area and giving it to a department that needed it more than the other immediately. And then after the amendment comes through, it'll be moved back, so I'm not shortchanging anybody. But the grants department that you showed there, what happened this year is Region 6 Housing Trust Fund has changed how they do their housing trust funds over the years. And anyway, in the past, one of the houses that we had had the grant monies rehab, the person didn't fulfill that requirement to own it for a certain length of time. So when you signed off that they were allowed to sell it, they refunded money to us. And then we had to turn around and pay that back to the state. In order to write the warrant, I need to have the appropriation because we didn't budget money to do that. So it's really not the county's money that's passing through us. It's the homeowners and they're paying it back to the state, but that's what that is. And then there's also, um, health board should be listed as well. And that is, this is the first year that Green Belt moved the health board, um, contracting basically for us. They have to bring all of their state issued checks through us and then we reissue them back to them. I didn't have a budgeted dollar amount in the budget to do that. And so while the dollar's net zero, I still have to have an appropriation that allows us to write the checks.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Make a motion that we accept or, uh, move that the following resolution be adopted. Let's try it that way.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call.
Brian.
Aye.
Ron.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Tax suspension list for 2014-15 payable tax year. And I have, you guys have it, too.
Basically, just a list of people that are already currently on suspension. That is the formality that we have to send a letter to the Department of Human Services to find out if they're still eligible for suspension of taxes. And so this is just the request to have you guys send that, that letter to the Department of Human Services to verify that they're still, still eligible for that suspension.
For that suspension.
And you, and you got, made the list. And you make the list.
I make the list.
Do I hear a motion on that?
I'll make a motion to approve the tax suspension list for fourteen, 2014-15 payable tax year.
There's more she wants on that.
And be sent to DHS.
And be sent to DHS. For verification. For the 2014-15 payable tax year.
You've been to Radcliffe? I will second that.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Cancel prior year dispersments. Jessica, do you want to?
Yeah.
Go on that, too.
If we issue checks in, or warrants in the same year that we're... Basically, if we issue checks during this year, we're allowed to void them. If for some reason they're issued to the wrong person, whatnot, um, we can void them. After we've closed out a year and move into the next one, we're required to have board approval and it's called cancel instead of voiding. So you have one on your list that was issued and held and not paid to a vendor. The vendor was a contractor. They actually picked a different vendor to be the contractor, so we need to void that warrant. It's past the date that that fiscal year... Anyway, we're in the next fiscal year, so I need that one canceled. While I was at it, since you're addressing this, um, I moved up what we traditionally do in June. And we're just doing it now in April where we cancel all outstanding warrants that have not been cashed for more than a year. And by canceling them, the money is put back in the fund that it was drawn upon. But the people whose warrants are canceled have a year by state law that they can actually request that that money be returned to them. And we can reissue a check then, should they come forward and decide that that was an error and they needed their money.
Okay. Thank you. Do I hear a motion?
I'll make that motion to approve the cancel, cancellation of outstanding warrants for 2012-2013 fiscal year.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call again.
Brian.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Approval of the fiscal year 2014-15 salaries. And I don't know if we're ready to approve this yet or not, but I threw it on the agenda.
Well, after looking them over, I guess I would, I would make a motion that we table them for today. Um, I, it's not that there's anything wrong with them. I, I just, I see a little bit of discrepancy and I just need some clarification on, on some of them. And Jessica, how soon do you, do you need these? I mean, what day?
June 30th.
You'd like to have it before June 30th?
Yeah. Kelly needs to program them in for the first July payment.
Okay.
To people, but yeah, it, I don't think you're in a time crunch at this point.
Well, then I make a motion that we table this, um, until all of us are comfortable with, and then the questions.
And I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded. Table. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion is tabled. Change of status in the reporter's office. What we're, we have here is we recently had a employee leave the reporter's office and we had a temporary person put in place. And this should say temporary person down here. Yep, temporary. And this is Renee McClellan at $10. Do I hear a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the change of status in the recorder's office for Renee McClellan. Temporary hired, $10 an hour.
I will second that.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion?
I guess I just have one thing to say. This Barb was put into a little bit of a tight squeeze with her employee, um, finding a different job. I wish she would have kept this in the loop a little tighter on this. I know Lance has been down there several times, um, visiting with Barbara and what the plan is for, for employment. I knew nothing about this and I don't think any of us, far as I know, knew, knew nothing about this. This was, employment was a week ago Monday. And so I, I guess I would just state that I wish, or I hope that Barb comes to us with some better communication and better, as far as the future of that office of, of hiring help. Because what's gone on here, I mean Renee and Barb are best friends. And for the county people looking in, it just looks like we went and hired the best friend and brought her back in. And it, the more people you have involved in that decision, uh, the more comfortable the public is. So, um, I just, again, extend, our door is always open and Lance, again Lance has been down there several times. So, that's all I have to say.
Any other discussion? Hearing no other discussion. I, I will agree though, it helps keep us in the loop what's going on, so it doesn't raise a lot of brows. But, uh, other than that, no other discussion. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Motion carries. Utility permits, Secondary Roads Department.
I included some utility permits in the packet.
Daryl gave us a packet today.
We got some packets today, Daryl.
You want the packet back?
Nancy, take note of that.
She got one, too.
Wow.
It's sort of adjusted.
We got two utility permits on this. Permit 4914-A and permit 4914-B.
Um, can we? I have no concern. I'm gonna go ahead and make the motion for both those permits. I think they're both fine unless some, someone has an objection to that. I'll go ahead and make it for both permits.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Approved both permits. Let's print it. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. And these are the two permits. What do we got next on here, Daryl?
Um, discussion of equipment lease.
Okay.
I got a quote from Murphy Tractor, John Deere, for a motor grader. Just wanted to do a short-term lease, two-year lease with the option to buy. And this would be the new tier four machine. So didn't really want to go fully committed with it at this point. And, uh, this is also, um, we run the 772Gs. Uh, this is a 672, which is about 20 less horsepower. So a little bit smaller machine, but with that front wheel assist. And it, uh, has a P on the end of it and that's for, uh, the controls up on the seat, to seat. So, going with the short term to see if the employees can operate them, if it's more comfortable, uh, easier to operate. And will this be powerful enough to handle what we need to do? You know, that way if it's not, then at the end of the two years, we can say, here, have it back. It's not what we need. Or if we like it, we have the opportunity to.
Are you also comparing this to the cabin sheets as well?
Yes. So this will have all the information online and stuff. And there's, there's actually a, an email attached with it, what I asked for. The difference is, is the, um, the mounting system on the front, um, the little bit higher quote, uh, is all hydraulic. Where now, 4:30 in the morning, the operator has to get out of the blizzard, his machine, and try to hook up the V-plow. Go out there with a sledge and hammer the pins in. Where with that hydraulic that he's come out, they hook it right up, then we get out of the cabin and they're on the road. And if they don't need it, it's easy to just drop it off. Cause that V-plow will add that weight and get you bouncing, which you don't want to do. You don't have to. So there's quite a bit of advantages to that hydraulic lift system. Especially if we move forward in the future with, like, the retriever, the disc. So just wanted to present this to you, let you look it over. We can, you know, discuss if you have questions. You want to come to me individually or we can talk about it again, but just wanted to present it to you and then...
I was out yesterday and talked to Tim Stotter. He was driving. He's got the new cat. And so I stood, talked to him for just a little bit on the side of gravel road with the cat. And he's one that's driving one of the newest deers, right, that's been driving.
He's got the second newest.
Of, of the John Deers, which is a steering wheel. And so I was really curious to see how, and he's only had it a week, I think a short week, but just to see if, you know, cause it's a completely different driving system. I mean, it really is. And watching him come, you know, sit in there, he's just sitting so like this, you know, just very relaxed. And so one of the questions I had for him was, you know, comfort, um, you know, how, you know, how does it, are you tired at the end of the day? And, you know, his, his response to me was, well, he didn't think there'd be that much difference. But he said he could really tell at the end of the day, it's like, I'm not tired. I couldn't even go longer, is what he told me. And so there is a difference in those, you know, steering and, and sitting more comfortably that, that we all take for granted. But they are in him for, you know, quite a, quite a long time, so, um, he was impressed with what the machine was doing and really liked the cat machine.
And without having all those controls, you're, you're view so much better. You can see what's going on with your blade and stuff.
You're hunched over the steering wheel.
You're not hunched over trying to sneak over and look and hit this and that's.
Those are for riders, though. They got that, they wrap that cap so tight, you can't ride in there with them. But you can really see, that's why, but you can't really see good, so, yeah. And where the deer then controls, will that, will they act the same as a cat controller? Are they just two complete different?
They're completely different. In essence, they've taken the antler system off the floor and put it on the end of the armrests.
Okay.
Is my understanding.
Little toggles.
Next, what, in your opinion, going forward, would it be tough to have a fleet of mixed machines for the operators? As far as on those controls, are they enough different?
I, I don't know enough, cause we, we've never ran it. We're supposed to be getting one of, uh, it'll be a 770. It won't have the front wheel assist, but it'll happen to be a P. It'll have the joystick, just for a week. They're gonna, Murphy's gonna bring it here and let us demo it for a week. Just to look at it and I'll invite, when he gets here, I'll let you all know and you can come and, and look at it and...
And then question I had, too, when, the, when you need the power for summer, we don't need a lot of power in summer, do we? So really the power and weight comes when we're trying to bust through drifts?
Yes.
Is that a fair statement?
Definitely fair.
And the bigger and the heavier the machine, the more we're gonna get through on the first time?
Yes.
Do they run out of power?
Of course, as max equals acceleration.
So do they, do they run out of power when, when they go through those snow drifts? I mean, do they start losing power?
Well, it's more of a weight. Depends, they'll start lagging down, um, and not to get into brand specific, but one seems to have a better lugging capability than the other.
Okay.
So you, it, it douches quicker and it's faster, so it's keeping that power going.
Okay. Okay. And if you get too light, then you just start spinning out?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
But they're real, even the, the frames are the same size on these machines. I, I gotta double check, but I know on the cat, it's the same sized frame. If you took the numbers off of it, you'd have a hard time standing there looking at it, knowing that they're two different machines.
Right.
So they should be very comparable weight-wise, too?
Pretty close.
But the deer that you're looking at here is a smaller machine than both cats?
It's the horsepower.
The horsepower-wise, but...
I guess I didn't look at, haven't got to the actual frame size.
Cause I would hate to get a deer machine in here that's 20,000 pounds lighter and, and I'm horsepower and then we say, oh boy, this is terrible. And deer gets that bad a name, you know, but, um, so just so we're doing like comparisons, it's close.
And when I talked to Murphy, they said, this is their comparable machine to the cat 12.2.
Okay. Well, if they, if they're telling, if they're telling you that, then...
Yep. They said, this is the machine that we completely does that.
Yep. Okay.
Well, I think we can go review some of these things, look at it, think about it, and probably meet back with you in another meeting and then go from there.
Okay.
What do you guys think?
Yeah, I'm fine with that. We just received this packet from him this morning, so we'll get through it.
Yeah, I just wanted to get it to you.
You bet.
Give us something to ask questions on.
Something to ask questions about and talk about, um, so...
All right, well, thank you on that. Uh, what else, what else do you want to go to?
We have the secondary road budget and this is for the DOT budget. That we have to submit our secondary road, our budget to the DOT for approval, so. And I gave you a copy of that. I did enter a couple of numbers wrong, so I've got a correction. But I'll pick that correct here, on the revenue side, so. But, in essence, when you look at it, um, the last page under our expenditures, just want to point out, when you look at those expenditures, when you look at the two prior years and the current year, then the next year, you know, we're starting that spending going down. And it, it would be the total expenditures, this is what we're spending on, this is what we're spending, so, you know. We're going down this year, the next year we're really dropping, so...
Can you tell us where the numbers are that you changed?
Yes, that was under the revenues and it would be the regular road use tax received. That number should be, uh...
That last page? I don't know how many of those are. No, no. Um, oh, yeah, these are the revenues and these are the expenses.
So the regular road use tax received on the, uh, estimated receipts under the next column would be $2,785,801. Then the next for 3B, amount for 306.4A3, that's the FM money for extensions into towns, those, those little towns that we get and then we pay back on. That's $38,869. And then our time 21 money is $321,276. So, actually, it's, it's an increase of the revenues what I had listed there. I might have just got that, so...
So you want this approved for the figures that you just gave us?
Yes. Yeah, just those changes there and I'll print out a new one right after this. But then that way you can still sign this, so...
Do I hear a motion?
I looked at it this morning.
I'll go ahead and make that motion, that we accept the DOT secondary road budget.
I'll second.
With the corrections.
With the corrections. Very good.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, it's a roll call.
Brian.
Aye.
Ron.
Aye.
Lance.
Aye. Motion carries.
And the next one is the five-year construction program. We had a work session and, uh, we put together the official form and...
There's some apps.
And we had some maps.
Sorry, I looked them upstairs.
No.
I don't know if, do you want to go through each year and talk about each one or kind of talk about how, these are all, these will all be posted on the website, so everybody, for their view, you know.
I'm, I'm content with it, you know, the website. If you want to talk about this year's, it's fine. It's first year.
Okay, 2015. We've got a couple local projects, um, and that'll be, uh, bridges that we're replacing with culverts that'll be done by our crews, our day labor. Then, and you remember, this is for the next. We have a D65 for the pavement there. Then we also have a pipe down there in the Tiff district. This is all pending, the bonding. And then we have, um, two bridges over in the southeast part of the county. And I believe one of those is closed right now, right?
Yes.
Yep. So, just north of Witten. And one's three ton. Close to a three ton, so...
These are what we went over here, it's probably been three weeks ago.
Yep.
And you're presenting it to us. I, I'm fine not going over it, but knowing that it's gonna be posted on the internet so that people can see.
Yes.
Would really help if they have any questions.
That's really helping you, you can see it each year. So it'll be nice to have them on the website.
Yeah, I was at a meeting yesterday where I get to talk and it's amazing how many people know what our five-year plan is. They ask questions about it. I mean, you think we're just doing something and no one ever looks at it, but they, they all know, well, when are you gonna do this? And what are you thinking about that? And when's this gonna get done? They know it's on the plan, so, um, people are watching, you know.
Are you talking about one specific project?
Everybody was good with the projects. They really are. They really were. They all understood what was all going on and, um, got some really good remarks about, um, things that were happening in the engineer's office, so it was, you know, there, you keep it open and people are understanding what you're doing. And when you keep it open like that, that just answers a lot of questions right away, so...
That's our job. I tell you, Bruce, uh, I guess I could give him props over there. He's really taking the ball here. And without him and Lori, Terry and Greg, I'd never be able to do this. I can tell you that right now.
They're all doing a nice job out there.
So if Bruce resigns, I'm leaving.
Bruce is blushing.
I've seen Bruce dance. He's not going anywhere.
Do I, do I hear a motion for the approval of quotes? Or, nope, on the, uh, five-year?
I'll make a motion to approve the secondary road budget, or five-year plan, um, for, that's a good. Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries. Now we got the opening bids and approval quotes for supply in the 2014 corrugated metal pipe.
We buy pipe each year in the spring and then, um, that's what, the people could come in and they could buy pipe from us to put it in driveways. And then this is what we use to fix driveways in, in our roads, so. We had two quotes and, uh, one was from metal culverts and the other one was from Ill Iowa covert and supply. It's like Illinois and Iowa combined.
So there's Illawians out there?
Bill O'Leagian. They actually came in low quotes, so when we call them, we're gonna ask them, how do you say that? But they came in at $68,648 and, uh, Metal Culverts was the other company, came in at $72,507, so. Pending us going back and, and Bruce calculating everything again, making sure the numbers are right and everything's, we'd, uh, ask for approval of lower bidder.
So you want to make it official or do you want us to say pending Bruce's final inspection?
Yep, pending Bruce's final inspection and if everything's okay, let him go ahead and get it here.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. To go with the lowest bid pending, everything is fine.
In order, yep.
In order. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Aye. Motion carries.
And then the Region Six, we have this afternoon I'm heading there right after this, uh, to go over the distribution of the SDP money, so.
Your battle. Any other business out there? Hearing none, we can go to adjournment.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned.